...point so that we can create a start point for which to go to the DEP and say, "We not only want you to find them, we want you to compensate the water authority for what they are going to have to do with their debts, to fix the water quality for people without power, and efficient those wells, not being in the air or in place, which means they need to pay to be, may need to pay, I'm sorry, for their testing, may need to pay for any issue involved in what all your water transport for these families without question. And the DEP needs to step up and ensure and demand that that be done.
Well, we do know that the DEP is testing our public water supply. They are testing for a little bit of everything. We don't know precisely what the parameters are, but typically DEP tests for tier three parameters, which includes heavy metals, salts, the radia, the radionuclides and that sort of thing. So though we do not have test results yet, we are pretty confident that they will be coming to us soon.
That's right. And at the wells testing, there are individuals out there who won't believe the test wells have significant safety risks expected this issue. Pass the wells testing so that we have a new start point of public energy. Also, PDP is a very good field because a lot of fragments can lead the interior in low and acid, and that of course can be concerned and creates problems in nature. For example, in Springfield, where there are metal areas, the macrophages got in, in average levels and so on and so forth, from the acid dropping to 4.9 or so. And I actually see those kinds of things over that this kind of point in Canada, so. Do you have any questions?
We're kind of generally working through some questions, so. We have, we have a few questions. None actually specifically for you right now, Stephanie.
Yeah?
Lori? I don't know if you had anything else you wanted her to address?
No, I'm not sure.
Okay. With the chemicals, with the chemicals we do know and that we sent you, do you know how long they stay in the aquifer or how long they might break down? Do you have any insight on that?
Sure. Radio, um, it does tear them. Um, yes.
We don't, we don't know. We're not in radio. We're not in radio, Stephanie.
Yes.
No, we don't. I was talking about isopropylol and the one, isopropylol, which we know is in the aquifer.
Okay, hang on, yeah. So if you have radio, that's okay, it's a problem. And instantly it's causing yourself in the form of air.
We haven't, we haven't confirmed that and they were only 575 feet down, so I don't know.
Yeah, oh yeah, exactly. Oh yeah. That's radio. Now, if you have that presence, if you can't have, it means chemical, it's going to happen to that, which means you'll have that presence long enough in the aquifer. If you're in a bad disaster, because you've been touched again.
Well, we are dealing with a lot of unknowns, so I'm not really sure where else to go with that.
Can you say, say with this water authority on chlorine?
Is the water ignoring on chlorine?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. They have not detected any, many problems with the water, with the public water authority.
Okay. When those tests got bad, if you have the presence of salts, if you realize that you're going to have to switch out chlorine and chlorine, and that is extremely bad. Because chlorine, certain people can't even touch it when you're in your closet. And chlorine is this, the presence of bromides is detected in that private water system, it doesn't work. If it's in the well, it's not wrong. Except there's only one, I heard that, you know, if it's something too high, obviously we don't have that legal or, um, we don't, but that is going to come with one more requirement to be tested for.
Yeah, that's the problem that Pittsburgh had, actually. They had high bromides and then that reacted with chlorine in the public water systems, which created trivomethane, which is a carcinogen, and that's what prompted Pittsburgh Water Authority to send out its letter of public notification to the water agencies there. Yes.
That was something we were very concerned about for years. And many companies that had the water control reserves created an emergency wall, staying open on the Yellow River. For that period, and over the years, bromides, I can't remember the last name, when the Army Corps of Engineers did a test, found some, we were becoming more concerned about bromide levels can cause of the issue between chlorine and neutralizing chlorine. And chlorine involved infrastructures earlier than that. It can reach out everywhere. It melted lead, salt, zine, all the water within six months. The children ran the test in the schools and 70% of them are in land incandiation area. So, um, the fact that the infrastructure is being impaired and impacted when you think about having to that municipal plant or over from chlorine to chlorine.
Well, I hear, I hear what you're saying is that though we, we do need to be aware of the chemical additives that the company put into the well, we also need to watch for those naturally occurring elements, the heavy salts, the heavy metals, because that's, we just can't forget about those. We need to obviously pay attention to those too.
Yeah. And of course, within this system, you also have to be concerned about zonazides. That's an area nobody wants to talk about. Everything that is construction drive in the four or being in the year one, their municipal system, we've not known as statements of those chemicals being missed, which is a lot that I didn't think of in that four to three thousand, like already down 2,000 feet, and we're still not helping.
Well, Stephanie, can you stay with us for a little bit in case we have more questions for you, but I do want to move on, get back to our agenda, if that's okay?
If that period, if I have to go?
Okay. All right, well, you, we appreciate you joining us. Thank you. Brian, how long do the isopropylol stay in the aquifer? Does it break down and bind some of those naturally occurring materials?
Yeah, well, I think it's completely dangerous.
Dangerous?
The other thing I'd like to just mention is the activity that caused this, this activity could occur drilling any private wells. Foaming agents like this are usually drill private wells to get the solids out. And so, in terms of the community taking an active approach to manage this issue, the active approach is having a county-based private well construction standard and having the well builders that work in your county say, "Here's what you're allowed to do, and if you have a problem, notify us. You want to build a well, here's, go get a permit. You don't own a well or a hole." That you can do as a county and you can actually in many respects cover those types of things. The boring, that was probably being done for this natural gas site was probably installing to install the conductor casing in the upper terminus, if that's what they were doing. Most private well owners do the same thing. Using foaming agents like this, they're very common.
How, how does something like this end up 9,000 feet away?
I'm not, I'm not sure about 9,000 feet away. To move that quickly, that would be extremely strange. The way it may occur here is if the, the geometry would appears to be in this area, looks like, kind of like this, where you have the under rocks at the top, the older rocks in the bottom, and they've been slightly folded, so they have this undulation to them. And it also is possible that the rocks plunge a little bit to the south. When that occurs, when you have a slight fold and a plunge to the south, a primary fracture set will create that equal this way, in this direction, along that plunge. So, that is possible, that that could occur and move that way rather quickly. The crime over to cause that movement would likely not be them, but would be the person pumping the well, driving, pulling that head. So that is one of the reasons when there's an event like this occur, the first action should be to put a pump in the well that you added this product to, and begin to purge the wells around it to create a containment layer. Currently right now, if you think there's a, I mean, I mean, the stuff going in, whereas that will likely drive to the stream, go in that direction, that's probably the more likely path there than likely to go. When, when things like this are done, you, you attempt to contain that contamination to that area, you then begin to take the people that are directly impacted off that, because you don't want them to use the water because they pull it out. And then you go to the people that have no impact, typically upgrade and downgrade, and decide to take them off. Because if you have a contamination zone here, and you're trying to contain that here, and you have an impacted well here, the guy down the road here who has no problem, he's operating his well, well, he's operating the well, but what he's actually doing is pulling that containment or contamination out of that. So that's why for some, sometimes you'll have it where you'll be far away from this site and they'll be collecting samples. And they'll be doing head bed events. Because every time you pump a well, you actually short, cause a short-term change in the direction of groundwater flow. And you can actually have it flow uphill. So that's why you might be surprised and say, "Hey, the well they drilled here, why is that guy uphill impacted?" Well, because he drilled a well here, he turned his water around and pulled it up towards him. So, so I think the option for you is great to have the well head protection program they have. The zone one, in your well head protection zone, is a zone that you can prevent many hazardous activities, including oil and gas. And it's not the only way to do it as a community. So highlighting those zones are important. Another approach would be having private well construction standards. We're the only state of two that states that do not have them. And when we have attempted to pass them, the voters said no. But on the county level, the township level, rural level, maybe you can get something through. I strongly recommend to always cooperate with investigations. So if people want to test your water for free, let them. Our program that we have, we will look at any data for you, no charge. If you had pre-drilling data and post after this activity and want some insights, we'll look at it and say, "Hey, we see no change," or we see this, that we would suggest you go back to them and say, "Because of your situation, you should add a couple of fractures."
Brian, you compared oil and gas drilling to say, to be similar to drilling a private water well?
Well, in, for this application, in terms of what they were doing, drilling down 575 feet, going through the overburdened, this same event could have occurred by somebody that was just out there drilling a private well.
So you're saying that somebody drilled a private well?
They're going to pump isopropylol.
That is the problem, and all, but that doesn't.
Let me just, first of all, the foaming agent that was used is used.
I understand. The point I'm making is, is apples and oranges. These guys are injecting not only chemicals into the aquifer, but they, a couple of years ago, I saw a lawsuit going on that they did not have to tell us what was in their secret recipe because it was patented. They don't have to tell us what kind of chemicals they're pumping down into the soil. So I'm not going to mitigate this by comparing it to private water wells being done. When you have this multimillion dollar industry that is sucking the gas out of here, we are not seeing any good returns from this enterprise. I don't know who's making money off it. I don't really care. What I care about is we've got all this crap going into our natural environment here. Okay, so my mother at Freeman House has a gentleman knock on the door and say, "Here's some bottled water. Please don't drink your water." And as a matter of fact, don't gape in it or brush your teeth in it either. Okay, this happened at the Freeman House up here, which is right across from the hospital. Okay? Come on, we're, we're not.
Again, the question, the question was, how do we as a community attempt to address this issue of activities like this attacking our groundwater? And what I'm trying to broaden the discussion is just not that alone, to say where you have capability in law, is in the area of the regulations really with the private wells and drilling, where you could potentially have a program, where if somebody wants to drill a hole in your township, borough, et cetera, would have to go through and be licensed, say what you're doing, be notified where it's going and what's going on, and what's going to be used in that hole. And if there's a problem, you have an agent, all right, that could go visit that site. And it's not under assault. One of the problems when municipalities attempting to regulate oil and gas is because they attempt to regulate oil and gas. But if you broaden that per out to include all the similar activities like private wells, you get to accomplish potentially your goal without looking like you're only trying to meet that goal. Then that's what I was trying to get across, is that this same event could have occurred because the guy who drilled a private well, and he put the same chemical in.
Brian, I have a question about what you just said.
Sure.
You're saying the same events could have happened with the drilling of private water?
Absolutely.
Are you saying that the drilling of a private water well could push the fragments to the amounts that were put down this wall? 14,000 feet, so they end up in the nursery pond?
Again, if, if, what the guy was doing up there was drilling a horrible, 575 feet down, he lost control and lost his well there. That's the same, that same activity is the activity of drilling a private well.
Yes.
And if the guy was, made that short-term decision that he was going to do that, and that the same event would occur.
Do private water well drillers typically add nitrogen analysis to fragments?
Typically, nobody would ever do that with foaming it, what they did. But they do.
Do private water well drillers, how much pressure do private water well drillers usually use for their holes?
The same pressure rate that we, they use for air drilling of any quarrel.
Okay.
So that's the point I was getting across, is that you're attempting to find ways to address this. This same event could have happened by the natural, somebody drilling private well. So the way that you potentially address these concerns is to be taking it halfway, taking a broader look at it, and saying, "You know what, we're going to protect ourselves against all this. And if something like this occurs, we're going to just say, 'No, you can't use these.'" Or if you couldn't use those, you'd have to be notified. Because in my opinion, who's short-sighted to put a foaming agent like that to get a well dig that?
It wasn't only short-sighted, it was also immediate.
Right. Well, again, foaming agents like that being used have common practice to be used. But again, for their permit, if they don't have a, this is as a use, that would be a reason why it would be not acceptable.
He doesn't allow it to be used at the point when they would use it.
Right.
And the other issue is, once the.
Okay, hold on for one second. I have this man has had his hand raised for an awfully long time. I apologize.
I don't think I need the microphone.
Okay.
My name is Mike Cavellis up in Elk County. I've been the president of Elk County Care Center for about four and a half years. I've been eating, sleeping, drinking, you name it, fracking in the last four years, and we're one of the first. We have a small group of citizens just like you, meet regularly, can discuss fracking. I've been at Elk County Gas Task Force, and there meetings, and a zillion others. And I am a retired earth and space science teacher. Retired at the high school level for 30 years, 32 years, and taught at Penn State Dewey for coverage of earth and environmental science. And since I've been involved with this fracking issue, I've learned more and more and more. I've met Anthony Brocke, some of his friends, several times. He is one of the managers and teachers at Florida, I don't think he's retired yet. And he has shared with his audiences that these unconventional gas wells, the fracking wells, all of them, over time, will fail. I heard just mentioned here tonight that chemicals used when they do the fracking, and also the materials that are actually underground in the mycelial shell, when they come back, over time, they will corrode concrete and steel, so that another 30 years, your children, your grandchildren, will be dealing with failed wells and contaminated aquifers. All right? The state of New York, or North, bans fracking because of the health issues. And because for a reason. They have very good people, very intelligent physicians and others who went around and gathered data from all of, all of the United States, and they made the determination that fracking is bad. We're now hearing stories about the Pope coming to America, talking about fossil fuels and climate change and methane being the very potent greenhouse gas. And yet, you know, we still have people who want to drill, drill, crack, crack, et cetera, et cetera. So I heard tonight too, that, you know, some people are concerned that local municipalities can't do a thing. Well, there's an organization, if you want to write it down, called Seldar, the Community Environmental Legal Defense Board. There's a big, you got Highland Township up in our county, squared away with their ban against injection wells. And they've also been doing this for many, many years, all over the state, all over the country. So you can contact Seldar and you can write a suit if you're, if you're interested in it. And that's all I have to say.
And some more questions on the cards. Does DEP have a list of chemicals on the site? No, they do not. We just talked about them today. And when is the public wanting to get this list? We're not sure. Word has word elected officials invited to this meeting? Yes. When will there be a public notification? We're not sure. Are criminal charges being filed against JKLM? If not, why not? There are no criminal charges being filed against JKLM. There, Pennsylvania does have an environmental prime unit, and JKLM has admitted to an environmental prime, but as far as we know, violations have been issued by the Department of Environmental Protection. We don't, we haven't heard any official fines and no criminal charges. Why did they pour anything down and online in case well war? You have to ask JKLM on that. Let's see, what is our time?
I have one question. Is that, how many people in the room know how to interpret a laboratory water testing analysis? You might get back to home with JKLM. Anybody not interpret that, that test result in here? Okay. If anybody does need help interpreting those test results, I'd really like to look at that stuff, if you need any help. Like, is what is the saying, in parts of the million, parts of billion, in respect to maximum contaminant levels in relation to the water supply? I've worked at hundreds and hundreds of these cases, public herald, we publish thousands online, of individual water supplies, individual water testing. I'd really like to look at that and see if there was any changes or anything like that. If anybody wanted our help, Melissa's hard is up here. Of course, we're recording on this, so I'm probably going to want to report on that at our time, so keep that in mind.
Then of course, up to me and Michael. Josh Carter's up here too, and like Brian said, he also.
Josh Carter's not up here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Josh Carter's not up here, it's just my card. I know how to go over him. And Brian, of course, will help interpret tests as well.
And hopefully they have, that part.
Penn State Corporate Extension has resources online to help you interpret.
Just to back myself up, I mean, I studied with the environmental firm, Hae Environmental from Ohio. I used to review records for Superfund sites, groundfield sites. That's the kind of thing I reported on before I came to Pennsylvania, to what was happening with fracking. So I do have some background with that, water testing, soil testing, everything.
So I have a couple of questions actually for you guys really quick, and then we're going to go back to your questions. One of the questions that we have is that if there's anything that residents want from our elected or public officials locally or at the state level, that, that we need from them, that we don't have, so is there any, anything that you guys feel that you need to happen? And then also, we've been contacted by other groups in Pennsylvania, New York, and North Carolina, who do have a list of things that they suggest, and they offer to create us a letter that we could all sign on to, to then take to our DEP and our department, State Department of Health. So they did offer that help if the community, if the community wants it. But some of the suggestions were that the Department of Health get involved in this situation, considering that it is a known chemical that has migrated into the groundwater. Currently, the Department, Pennsylvania Department of Health does not have a relationship with the Department of Environmental Protection. So one of, one of the potential community asks could be that the Pennsylvania Department of Health engage specifically about this contamination. Another one is that DEP should suspend JKLM's operating permits. JKLM is, has suspended operations at the East Hall Wellpad. They are still operating their Sweden Valley Wellpad, despite admitting to no lethal injection of chemicals into the groundwater, and also other spills and fractions. DEP is not stopping them from operating at that other website. Another request that other residents have brought forth is that shaking on should not be the primary point of contact for the community, just one of several. And that the emergency management services or some other local officials kind of take the lead and start reaching out to people one-on-one, Mr. Hayner, it's just, we're going to a board and that sort of thing. So is there anything else that residents, that any of you feel that, that we need to have happen that hasn't happened?
Ban fracking.
Shut it down.
You don't need any testing, you just need to sit in the middle.
Okay, so banning fracking. Further away from the hospital, not closer.
Further away from Potter County, scary. How about off the planet?
The benefit, we are not getting any benefits, and I don't mean monetary, I mean, our, our land sides, our landscapes are not getting priver, we're not getting employment. Yes, there are people that pipeline in our counties, but they're pipelining outside of town. Like, we do have young men that pipeline here, and they, they usually are out of town for, you know, four out of seven days. What the matter is, is in Potter County directly, fracking or other pipelining is not benefiting us. There is no positive note sent here for any, absolutely.
That is, that is something that we can create another forum after this to discuss in greater depth, because that is something that takes time to work out and make happen. But as far as what we're dealing with right now, are there any short-term things that ask that we can have of our elected officials or anybody else, or ourselves for that matter? Or is everything, everybody is, we have everything we need?
We will need that to contact the DEP and get us a list of parameters that the DEP is testing for, because those are the ones that are suspect in the fluid that was injected. So we believe the public to know the list of parameters, and we need the actual results publicized. Because we need to know. We don't want JKLM, this toxicologist, to say, "Well, they looked it over in the, in the primary concern, is isopropylol." I want to know the entire bit of chemicals that was the constituents of surfactant, and I want to make that, that decision myself. I don't want a toxicologist hired by JKLM to make that decision for me. I want to make that decision myself. And I don't want to use borough water because there was such a delay, and if the DEP doesn't know, has gone down that hole yet, and they're still investigating, then if a borough employee can't tell me that it's safe to drink, and we can put the water back online now. They don't know what to test for because they don't know what went down the hole yet.
So we do have those unknowns. We don't know everything that's down the hole. We should probably know that ASAP. We don't know precisely what the testing parameters are. We should know that ASAP. And then as soon as anybody has the test results, should that be public knowledge?
Yes.
Okay. One more thing, we've talked a little bit about how we can prevent things, how we as a community, without depending on, you know, putting all this responsibility on the county commissioner's shoulder, or, you know, depending on other people to do it for us, how we as a community can prevent risks like this from happening again. You really kind of dodged a bullet?
Maybe.
Maybe. And are we just going to? And are we just gonna keep doing the things that we're doing and hope that it never happens again? So there is, I think, room for more discussion about how we can make sure that we are totally protected, and this is not gonna happen again. Or if it does, it's gonna happen a little more smoothly. So we... I think we have enough interest to talk about that at a later date. So if you have not signed the sign-in sheet and you want to stay informed of additional meetings and that nature, please do so. Now, I've covered all my notes. So back to you guys. Anybody have anything else, any other questions or anything else? Live questions? I haven't checked the livestream, but let me hand it like to somebody who wants to say something. I saw a hand here.
Where's the sign-in sheet? Anybody?
Back here, Josh.
Okay, thank you.
I'll check through this question online.
My question was, how long do those tests take to get back when we've been submitted? Does anyone have it there?
They can be rushed, but some of the results came back already. We don't get them.
So... But they don't give you a time... I mean, I'm a private business owner, and the DEP is monitoring my well closer than they are these wells. I can't believe that even the answers are not being given from DEP when... I mean, I have to provide same drinking water at my restaurant. That's how... This is insane. You can't get a test back. But for them, how long is like 10 days? Crazy.
You're on public water, right?
I will. No, I have to have mine well tested. And I'm saying DEP follows up with me quicker than anything that you've talked about here. When I have, you know, I have to chlorinate, I have to have my well tested, I have to have DEP inspect me. I can't believe that they can't... That's crazy. So is it just that they're not giving DEP information?
I don't know, but does JK LM... Does JK LM give you an alternate water source?
No, I'm not... I don't think I've been affected. I just mean in terms of process. I... It's crazy to me that...
DEP's response has been late for most complaints and investigations like this. Most of the time that we see this stuff happen, these are called gas migration investigations usually, when they involve so many people. Generally, the company is doing their own independent testing. DEP is kind of a shadow inside of that investigation, either doing split sampling or something of that nature. This is something that we just reported on, which is the fact that you have a lot of homes that seem to have been exposed to contamination. A lot of homes have made complaints to the company. But the company has not been called DEP and told them about those complaints, even though by law, that's what the company is supposed to do. Some of the residents here that I talked to had that same kind of scenario. DEP, though, has not necessarily issued a fine to the company, not complying to that law.
So what is the rush on a test? I mean...
DEP has 10 days to come out and do a test if you make a complaint. So their response time can be 10 days according to the law for their response to your complaint. Their determination for that complaint, so how long before they actually give you a decision, is 45 days under the law. But they violate that routinely, and there's no one holding a gun for it.
I was at the meeting, it was, you know, the 25th? 24th, sequel. And there was something that bothered me about that meeting, and that was that the... I think the man representing the emergency management advised everyone who was there to refer their questions to JK LM, that JK... Turning over, you know, responsibility, because JK LM admitted responsibility, that they would be handling all this. And I came away from that meeting thinking, "Well, I'm not really comfortable with that." You know, that their website that they said was going to be up and running on Friday... What I have seen, when I've checked it several times, is just reports on the results of the water tests. I'm not able to see questions that are submitted to JK LM from whomever in the public has a question. So I'm not able to see that dialogue. I'm not able to see JK LM's responses. So that, you know, that closed system of handling this whole situation is troubling to me, and I believe it's troubling to other people. And I agree with what Maggie said at the beginning. It's too bad that it took these two groups to organize this town meeting. That it wasn't something... And I know the committee members are busy. Paul, I thank you for being here. I know how much you have done to educate the public through the years about the various issues, and how much has been done to protect public water supplies, etc. But I'm not comfortable with JK LM handling this and handling communication about it. And so that... I just wanted to say that.
You're at the meeting on the 24th?
The meeting where JK LM was meeting with the borough and township officials, etc.
And then, but, okay, so DEP's press release today said the department also participated in the September 25th meeting. Paul, were there two meetings, or does DEP have one date?
I have no idea whether it's Friday. It must have been a Friday meeting. I had a phone contact with DEP, but no meeting last Friday.
Okay, so maybe they meant to put it somewhere.
I think maybe they meant to do JK LM individually. I have no idea of that.
It says September 25th meeting with the Potter County Commissioner, who came up, Potter County, AM, poll, catastrophic, and JK LM. That sounds like a meeting on Thursday.
And the DEP didn't participate in that? I mean, he does call from the DEP, right?
No, I called DEP, so I'm walking into a meeting right now. And I'd like some answers to these questions, because we've got emergency management, we have municipal officials, we have the energy company, we have whoever the heck was gonna be there, yourself included. And I want answers, and I got what I could from them. And that was at 2:00 minutes of 4, our 4 o'clock meeting.
What I'm saying is, in the press release, it says they participated in the meeting.
Not at all. They weren't there.
Yeah, the DEP, that's what it said.
Their press release is false.